Alright, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Um, it is six P M. Monday, uh, December fourteenth. Uh, we have to open the meeting, the meeting is officially open. Uh, at this uh, point, uh, first out of business, I'll wave, uh, entertain a motion to waive the announcement of both meeting recordings.
So moved.
Waitman seconds.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote stillings.
Aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Clark.
Clark, aye.
Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is many of you know, Clee Blair Senior passed away, um, this past week. I'd like to have a moment of silence before we begin the meeting. Uh, a remembrance for him, given his service in town, knowing that we will probably do something a little bit more formal uh, in the coming weeks to recognize his service to the town. Alright, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, minutes treasury warrant and payroll. Either we have a motion to approve treasury warrants twenty-one dash W twelve and payroll twenty-one dash P W twelve.
So moved.
Second stillings.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have a question, can we just, um, have clarification on the numbering system, this is a little bit different than what we're accustomed to think.
Honestly, I have. Honestly, I haven't looked at the numbering system, it was done by. Um, Aaron, I could email it to you tomorrow, Leah, why, why it is the way it is.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was a reason for the change or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not there's anything.
Okay, we need clarification on that.
Yeah.
Um, Leah, do you have any concerns about moving forward otherwise?
Don't leave me forward, thank you.
Okay. Um, any further discussion, we have a motion in a second. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye, fully, and see away wages.
Clark.
Clark, aye.
And Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have, uh, three sets of meeting minutes for, uh, November thirtieth, December third, and December fourth.
Make a motion, approve all three as a block.
I can't, I can't approve all three, but I can approve the first two because I wasn't at the last one.
So let's, I mean, if you want to take them as a block, I guess, uh, Skip, it would just be appropriate to refuse yourself from those, I don't. Um, unless you have an objection of like to take them one by one.
No, I don't have an objection, I'll just refuse.
Okay, do I have, I have a motion to approve all three, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Resity, I'm sorry, that's this man, reading the names on the list here, uh, Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Clark.
Refused.
And Resity, aye, motion carries, four yeas when recusal. Everyone's tiles keep shifting, so I'm trying to keep everybody in some semblance of order. Um, next we have public comments, uh, is there anyone, uh, any member of the public that is here for public comment? If you are, please raise your hand in the Zoom feature. Um, and Peter Crane, who is hosting the meeting, will let you in. I don't see any hands raised.
I see no hands raised.
Okay. If that changes, Peter, just let us know, I know people sometimes struggle with the forums, so. Um, just, uh, let us know, we'll get it taken care of. Okay, we have a couple items, but first, I think um, out of respect for, uh, Chief Monaco. Um, I think that he was part of perhaps the town administrator update. Um, maybe we'll take that item out of order, Ron, if that's okay with you and rest of the board.
Fine, I'm gonna be able to let him go, so appreciate that very much.
Okay, no objections from the board? Alright, hearing none, uh, Ron, I'll hand it over to you and the chief.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that very much, and appreciate you moving a little bit out of order, I asked the chief to come in. As you know, all the department heads and stuff are bringing to, uh, the Board of Selectmen for their ratification. But there's some employees, I think, when we hire that you guys really want to meet. Uh, even though you don't vote on the rat- ratification, I asked the chief uh, to introduce a new police officer that we went through a very significant hiring process, the chief is screens candidates and then he brings it in for a more formal interview. Myself, the chief, and one of his officers went through and screened candidate, we're very fortunate to have quite frankly, a lot of qualified candidates who wanted to be a police officer. And the gentleman that the chief is gonna introduce has been the candidate we selected. Uh, and we pretty much came to a unanimous decision, I'll let the chief take it from there, chief?
Sure, thank you, Mr. San Angelo, thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's nice to see you all again. Um, yeah, like Ron was saying, we, we had a pretty extensive, uh, hiring process with this. We actually had nineteen, we limited it to only applicants that already had the full-time academy. And we actually got nineteen applicants, uh, that came in for it. And I'm happy to say that Andrew down here is, uh, cream of the crop and rose to the top of everybody. And, uh, interviewed very well, and I think he's gonna be an excellent addition to this, uh, police department, so. I'll tell you a little bit, bit about him, uh, Andrew was born and raised in the Watch Houston area, he's graduate of the Watch Houston Regional High School. And a graduate of, uh, Quinn Segumay Community College's Associates Program in Criminal Justice. Uh, he's a graduate of the Cape Cod Regional Police Academy. And, uh, most recently, he's been working part-time up at the Hubbardston Police Department, so it's gonna be a really easy transition for him to join us here at Rutland P D. He, um, lives up in Hubbardston with his wife and, uh, I think he's gonna fit in really well, and I could, they, I think you can see him up there on the screen if he wants to say hello.
Hello, everybody, thank you so much for having me, I'm excited to get started here.
One of the nice things about this, uh, members of the select, select board. Um, when we interviewed him, he knew a lot of our police officers and stuff. He, you know, one of the things that I look for in interview processes how, where are you of the town and, and the people in the town and what's happening in the town? It was nice to hear he knew police officers, he knew other people that lived in town, he was very familiar with the town of Rutland. And you could hear the passion in his voice about being part of this department, so. I think we are very pleased to see that he actually did his homework before coming to the interview and well, was well-prepared for the interview.
Well, thank you, and, uh, Andrew, welcome aboard. Um, and chief, I wanna give you a congratulations as well, I saw that, uh, your department nabbed the Grinch. So it's good to see Christmas is safe, so congratulations, but, um, Andrew, welcome aboard, we look forward to having you, and, uh, congratulations to, uh, everybody in the department, so, thank you all. Welcome aboard.
Welcome, thank you.
Alright, um, moving right along, uh, we have, uh.
I got some more things.
Town administrator update, Ron, uh.
Yeah, I wanna first start with the COVID issue. Uh, just to let you know, we're up to seventy-six cases. Uh, three will fall off tonight, but as you know, those, the cases numbers are climbing very rapidly, uh, not just in Rutland, but all across the state. Uh, and we expect them to continue to increase and probably until after Christmas. Uh, I'm thinking that we're not gonna see it slow down and probably till the third week of January. Fourth week of January, we start seeing it slow down. As it relates to COVID, I did wanna take a moment because, you know, one of the things that I'm reluctant to do as a town administrator is to close town buildings, and I had closed all of them. Except for the town hall, the town hall annex. And today was our first day that I decided to close even those two buildings and have it by appointment only. Um, and, and frankly, it's not something I take lightly, I had a lot of discussions with Scott, the chairman of the uh, Board of Health and with our health agent in discussing moving forward with this. We all came to a conclusion within, the number of cases are going up. Uh, we felt it was appropriate to send a message to the town that the, the number of businesses who can, should consider closing down when they're really have that kind of involvement with the public. One of the interesting things I found in talking to my staff is that the people who most enter our building, believe it or not, at the tax office are seniors. The most vulnerable population because they don't like technology, they feel more comfortable with bringing their payments to the door. So the most vulnerable people in town are the people that are coming into our offices. Uh, I feel good we have shields and a lot of protection up, but I think it, you know, we can and, and had a lot of discussion with department heads about can we provide quality services even without the buildings being open? And we all believed that it went very well last time. Most town services can be done through phone calls or through internet or through emails, so, uh, my staff is prepared to handle all those situations. Uh, my guess is, in all honesty, that we probably won't be able to open again until late January, given what's going on. Um, as I said, I, you know, when I was in my other town, I kept it, I was open three months before everybody else. So I like to keep buildings open, but I think in this case, I think it makes all the sense in the world to close to the public temporarily and provide the services through other electronic means, so. Uh, I just want the public to understand it's not a decision we took lightly. All employees will be working their schedules, nobody's getting out and leaving or working from home, everybody's expected to work in the building, so. Uh, taxpayers will get their money worth from employees doing the work. We're just gonna be a little protective on that personalized service. If they want, they can call off, it's really important. When they feel they need to make an appointment, they can do that. Uh, and do that, our, uh, inspectors will be looking at plans online for those developers that wanna move forward. Uh, they can review all plans online and stuff, and if there has to be a face-to-face meeting, there can be, so for those exceptions where we really need it. Uh, that will be put in place. Uh, so that's sort of the COVID update, and I gave you a full report with a lot more detail on the town administrator's report that I provided to all of you. The good things that happened today is we finalized the five-year capital plans. Uh, Skip happened to come into building and Skip, I had emailed all of you that uh, you could pick up your binders with the five-year capital plan in it. I made binders and my office and staff worked together to provide the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Capital Improvement Committee with binders outlining a five-year capital plan. Uh, this is more thorough than I think anything you've had in the past. Uh, had an opportunity to meet with the chairman of the Capital Improvement Committee and went through the book with him, and he was very happy to have that kind of tool to work from. This book will continuously be updated, uh, on an annual basis, and one of the big things I wanna do is apply, when the grants come, I, I sent a note to uh, Sean Cronin, who is one of the leaders at Department of Revenue Services. And let him know that I'm gonna be applying when the grants become available for the community compact grant to get a company to come in and do a physical evaluation of all the buildings for what each building needs in terms of infrastructure needs into the future, and then once we have that plan, we'll incorporate that into the capital plan you guys were receiving. So it's gonna take a, another year to get to where I really wanna be with that. But I think we've got a good foundation to start off, and I think you'll be excited when you see the details of the plan. Uh, you can pick up your books whenever you want at town hall. They're all available for, again, you guys, the finance committee and the capital improvement committee, the books are there. Uh, the ultimate goal is to eventually instead of using free cash for the operating budget, is to use free cash and other means to purchase capital equipment into fixed buildings, so that's the long-term goal. The book has in it the explanation of the duties of the Capital Improvement Committee and how free cash should be used along with every department's capital plan. Uh, so I think you'll find it to be useful information for you. If you have any comments, suggestions, please email me back after you get the books. I'd love to hear any of your recommendations as well. Um, in terms of licenses, you know, we looked at the licensing process and, and I was told that you guys kinda get licenses that are not completed, or kind of in, in, in partial status. I'm not quite sure why that is. Uh, tonight, you're gonna be voting on four licenses that are completed. What happens in the license process, it goes the request for a li- a new updated license goes to various different town departments, and we go through it. Each department approves it, and then we finally send a final package to you guys in terms of the license. So that's the process we're gonna move forward, I don't know what the value is of giving you a half-done work product. So we're gonna give them to you as we can recommend that you approve them because our departments have done that, finished that process, if for any reason you want them early, we can do that, but it, I don't know value of a, of a partially done license, so. It's up to you, but that's kind of the process we expect it to go forward. I put in your packet just to let you know the Charter of Communications gave its annual check of eighty thousand, eighty-eight dollars and five cents, which is their annual check that runs operating expenses for our cable department. Um, that's what we call the PEG access money. Uh, so the town did receive that, so we kept continuous funding to keep cable going. Uh, I also, we had to put in your packet, the, uh, W R S D, the school district having its budget roundtable. And they're requesting that all town administrators in the district attend. And also a representative from the Board of Selectmen and a representative from the finance committee. So we asked the chairs there to appoint recommend one of the members to serve in that roundtable. And I gave you the date in the, in the documents in your packet, I think it's the sixth, but it may not be right off the top of my head. The last part of the discussion has to do with, uh, a discussion over the master plan steering committee appointments. When we were talking about the town center report, uh, there was some discussion from some selectmen about they were, didn't feel as prepared on that issue as up to speed on the issue as they would like to be, and Lea gave a a really good report explaining where they were, and David George was in it. And I, I suggested that, you know, you guys consider some types of appointments, I guess the, the concept of the master plan is to have appointments that represent different segments of your community, somebody from the select board, somebody from the business community, from the school community. Somebody may be involved in conservation and planning and to divide that up. Uh, Norm is on this call, and I asked Norm to come in because Norm came in to me and suggested that the planning commission of, of being the department that really kind of oversees the whole planning concept and master plans. He would like to take leadership, him and his committee would like to take a leadership uh, of that steering committee and leadership of the master plan. And asked if the Board of Selectmen would be willing, and again, it I think it's, can go in different ways in different towns. But they would like to take that leadership and appoint members, if possible, to the steering committee. And he asked that he would love to have a member of selectmen appointed by the Board of Selectmen. He would like to have, uh, David George will sis- you know, be as a technical advisor, but he would be looking if, if you guys any suggestion for public members, he would be looking for your advice. But in terms of providing leadership, they would like, if it's okay with the Board of Selectmen to make those appointments, and we're thinking about a seven-member board for that. Uh, but Norm is here because he wanted to kind of bring you the perspective of the planning commission. And I was frankly, I was pretty happy that somebody wanted to take that leadership role. That's, that's the purpose of opening that for discussion, and that's the last thing I have as far as my agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Leah, I see that you had your hand raised, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, I just had a question, this is for, um, if I understood correctly in talk in my conversations with Dave and our conversation in board meeting a few weeks ago. This is for a piece of the master plan, I believe, and so is this um, kind of appointment of the committee for this piece of the master plan, or is the hope that this committee is going to re- remain intact as funding becomes available for the additional pieces?
So, so the funding mechanism, and David can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe is three components of the master plan in this phase, but it would make sense to me uh, that, that when you, if we get funding for additional phases, the same committee would stay in place uh, for all the phases, because it just, it makes sense that the people who structured the first design of the document, they're gonna be working with C M R P C to design it, that it would be consistent across the board, so that would be my recommendation. Doesn't make sense to have a different group that have to split kind of how the master plan looks, so I, I would agree it should be consistent.
Uh, is there any other conversation from the board, I just have a couple thoughts, if no one else, so. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I saw that Jeff raised his hand a couple times and put it back down again, I just wanna make sure that he's okay.
I'm sorry, Jeff, was that you?
Uh, well, I'm fine, it was before, uh, Ron got to the talking point. I wasn't, uh, aware that that was the reason for our, uh, planning board chair and our town planner, I was going to ask to, uh, accommodate them and take them out of order, but um, when the town administrator got to that last point, there made sense. I just wanted to, uh, accommodate them like we did in chief.
Okay. Alright, um. So I think it's important, you know, I know that, um, planning board wanted to kind of take the reins and, and with our input. Um, you know, this document, if used appropriately, um, can really help lay the foundation for where we head as a community for, uh, the foreseeable future. And I wanna make sure that, um, we, you know, as, as two elected boards are working hand in hand with this, so I would envision that even though we have steering committee and there's gonna be a member from our select board presumably on that steering committee, that maybe Norm, if it's amicable to you and your board, we could have some joint meetings as this thing progresses, just to talk through some of these issues. Um, you know, where we're headed, uh, you know, I know that, um, N G L has certain requirements of different topics that need to be addressed in the master plan. Um, a lot of them fall under planning purview. But I think there is gonna be certain, uh, areas of interest that the select board is going to want to at least be, uh, kept apprised of. If that makes sense. Um, I also think that the continuity too, to Leah's question is important, but, uh, I think too, it's, it, this could be a lengthy process, and I think we have to recognize there might be some turnover, particularly with the elected boards. Um, and that's just something that I think we have to plan for, so. That being said, uh, whoever, regardless of who, who was on that steering committee, um, seeing as continuity is important, I think the open lines of communication between all of the boards and commissions that are involved with this process really need to be at an all-time high. So, that's my only comment. Uh, Norm, did you have anything you wanted to talk to about the process, or?
Uh, yeah, just very, very quickly, uh, I, I guess I was gonna, first of all, just gonna second, uh, pretty much what Mr. San Angelo said. Uh, the, the biggest thing, i- at least, uh, in, in my mind, is the master plan, uh, the state law regarding the master plan basically says it is a planning board document. Uh, and, uh, I fi- actually, I find it rather unusual that about the, the only people that have to give approval to this thing is the planning board. It does not go for approval to the selectment, does not go to town meeting, uh. A- and, you know, a- as such, the state law calls for it to, uh, uh, to be, you know, in, in charge of the planning board, it seems as though it, it's only reasonable that the, the steering committee should still be appointed. By the way, with definitely uh, suggestions, uh, for members and participation from the select board.
Yep, and I, I think it's important, and that's, that's very well said. Um, I think my big fear with master plans is that they get completed and then they sit on a shelf. And then don't get looked at for a decade. Um, so while I think planning board is gonna take the active role in helping to shape this thing, um, at the end of the day, it's up to all of the boards and commissions to implement whatever is kind of adopted, so. Um, my only ask, Norm, uh, from you, and I know you will do it, is, is to just kind of, uh, keep that open line of communication. Um, let us know how things are going. Uh, maybe some periodic updates, some joint meetings to, to update the boards. Um, just to see how things are progressing, and then we can, uh, certainly help work through this and make it uh, public, just so the public is aware also what's going on.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to note that, uh, in conversation with Mr. San Angelo, he was very, very emphatic that, uh, it is so important that if we do come to decisions and, and whatever, that, uh, th- these wh- whatever you got, actions, let's say, be implemented. Uh, and, and I don't know, I said, you know, even further. Personally, I think if, if we come up with, let's say, just in, you know, one of the sections, you know, for, for, for example, the, uh, the land use plan element, uh, which I believe is one of the first three. I- i- if something comes out of that, but who even go any further? If there's something that can be implemented, do it. Uh, you know, you know, get it, get it in place. Uh, so, uh, that's, yeah, a- and to be perfectly honest with you, uh, I'd have to say that our two thousand master plan was written. And as much as I think you'll find that, uh, the town progressed not, not that much differently from what it kind of outlined. But it, it, it went on the shelf. A- and, uh, I, I'll make a bet, there haven't been ten people that have looked at it thoroughly. Uh, you know, since then, so, uh, it, it's, it's gotta become more, uh, a live document than what we have now.
So, to add to that, Mr. Chair, if I could, right, so in the previous time I was in, when I came into the town manager's position, they had done a master plan that sat on a shelf for two years with nothing done. And I came into office, and what I did is I turned the implementation team into all my town department heads became the implementation team. And because the department has to have resources, when you, when you try to have a citizen implementation team, they don't have any resources. There might be D P W, my police, my fire, everybody has resources that they can add to do the master plan. So when it, when the master plan gets close to being completed, I wanna have that conversation uh, with the Board of Selectmen and the Master Plan Steering Committee, because you know, just getting a group of volunteers to do, to implement doesn't, in my opinion, make a lot of sense. So I think it really has to be a cooperative effort of employees who have powers to get things done, if we wanna get it done, and there we need a step-by-step, what I would call a project plan with you know, task of who does what and when it's gonna be done, and you really have to hold people's feet to the fire by developing a project plan that defines the roles of different people to actually accomplish. And, and usually what you do is you do what we call the low-hanging free fruit, in the beginning, the easy things. And by getting the easy things and showing completion of some of the goals of the master plan, it then makes it easier to do the harder stuff when you have some accomplishments up front, so. That will be part of the conversation when the master plan is completed, is how we go forward into the implementation process.
Yep, and Leah, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, um, can we just have a reminder of the, for, mostly for the public, what the initial, I think it's three parts of the master plan are? Um, I know we've talked about it, but just since we're having this conversation now.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, David, do you have those three sections, 'cause I think David George, our town planner, would be best positioned to answer that, I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Right, so, uh, I appreciate that, first, I, we appreciate the community's support engaged phases, hopefully that the phase one will capture the land use plan element, the housing element, and the economic development, uh, chapter. I think what's hap- gonna happen, what's hopefully gonna happen here is that the Regional Planning Commission will be looking at other grant opportunities to do other sections of this. I do know that the open space and recreation element will be coming due soon, so we can work that into this. That chapter was uh, taken care of by the Conservation Commission and others, so. I think working, you know, working within this budget, we can get a lot done. So we appreciate everybody's help on this matter.
Yep, and basically that, um, those three elements, Leah, follow the first three that are listed in, listed in N G L section eighty-one D, which is the the governing authority for the master plan, so it sounds like we're just taking it chunk by chunk as it's listed. Um, for those that wanna, I guess, follow it home or are looking for the reference. Um, great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, did you notice Jeff's hand is on?
Oh, sorry, I can't, I have a hard time looking at it, it's like, uh.
As I was gonna say, you guys not, not using the hand raise option, otherwise I can wave.
No, I, no, I, I see it now, it's, it's kinda like looking at the Brady Bunch here with all the tiles and the moving parts, so, um, Jeff, did you?
Now, whatever you prefer.
Oh, yes, um, I, I just wanted to opine that if, uh, state statute specifically outlines for the planning board to spearhead it, then I think that's sounds perfectly reasonable. Um, I just wanted to say, and, uh, my belief would be that past precedence on steering committees and resume screening committees, uh, have been appointed by the town administrator. And, uh, and for some of the reasons that Ron just said, is to make sure that, uh, there's balance and uh, you have department heads who have their say, et cetera. The past precedence of this board has been that the T A uh, selects the steering committee, and I'm, I'm all for, uh, if the statute says that the planning board uh, oversees the project, that, that's totally reasonable with me.
A couple of points to, to that, Jeff, uh, the planning board under the state statute is the one who officially approves the plan. The, the law doesn't specifically give any particular group the power to do the appointments to the steering committee. So that's why we wanted to have that discussion with you. Frankly, it could be done by you, it could be done by them, it, it could be done by me, it's, it's really up in the air. But we wanted to make sure you were involved, the Board of Selectmen was involved and had a discussion of the process. So that's why, you know, me and Norm agreed it, let's, let's have the conversation with you guys. What we would be looking for though tonight, and hopefully you guys could pick somebody to represent your board tonight, because the concept is to have the committee up and running for January one, so we can start moving the process forward of actually starting to build a master plan, so hopefully uh, if it's, if it's possible, you could select one of your members tonight, that'd be great, if not, we could do it the last meeting in December, but that, that's up to you guys.
Sounds good, I would nominate Leah if she was interested.
Well, Leah.
Is there a motion, Jeff?
If you'd like it, sir, I'd make a motion to nominate Leah as a representative.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Um, Leah, is this something, one, you'd be willing to take on, and just two, as a concern, um, obviously, I think with the work you're, we're doing with Dave now, um, you're certainly uniquely qualified to kind of dive in. Um, my concern is the continuity. Uh, because I know that, um, you and Jeff's terms end in May. So if it's something you can take on, um, and I'm not even gonna ask it, because it's, it wouldn't be appropriate to ask you if you're in for reelection, but the, i- if you can just somehow make sure that whether or not you're here after May, you convey to the board where you are, where you left off in your work. So that, um, the board can pick up. Uh, if it's something that that we need to do and and there isn't some, some backlog in terms of work. But I guess first, the first question is whether it's something you'd be willing to take on.
Uh, thank you, Jeff and Mitch both for kind of giving me this opportunity. As I think the board knows, I've been a big proponent from the beginning of my kind of running, is getting a updated master plan going and. Making sure that it's something like Norm and Dave and Ron have mentioned, I think everybody agrees with. An actual living document that we can all work with and not just sit on the shelf and. You know, it's been there for twenty years and that's great, so, um, I do appreciate that a lot, and I think it's really important work. Um, I would love to have the opportunity to continue working with Dave and, um. Norm and the planning board and the rest of the, the team that, planning and whomever seats. Um, and I'm happy to keep, you know, notes and documents and pass it on to Dave or whomever should that need arise.
Phew, there's no but, I was waiting for the but.
No but.
Well, I know we're all, we all have a lot of obligations and I, you know, I know that, um. We're all involved in many different committees and subcommittees, so I, I personally, Leah, I certainly appreciate the, um, the.
Thank you, I would just like to offer to the board, I would really appreciate and value any feedback that individual board members have also. And realize that we probably have some differing opinions on things and that my hope would be to bring. Um, a holistic view and not just only my, move mine forward or only one subgroup and just try to keep things. Um, as open towards this, this subcommittee as possible, so I would really value that input from. Individually.
Uh, Leah, from, from your comments, does this mean that you'd be willing to be the clerk of the, uh, steering committee?
Wait, I'm not even on the steering committee yet.
Yeah, I think, uh, Leah makes a good point and. And that what I would like to see, and and the most successful master plans I've seen in communities that I work are really heavily data driven. Um, and the data is sound and the research is good. Uh, we've had a divisive couple of years when it comes to particularly housing policy, I know some land use issues. Have been pretty divisive, uh, I just wanna make sure that, uh, we are using this as a non-political. Uh, document, uh, that regardless of board makeup moving forward, we should be able to look at this. And say this is sound, this is well researched, this is data driven, and I know that that's something in particular. Uh, after what happened, uh, with our housing study that I'm gonna have a keen eye out for, uh, is the data component. So I think that's, that's a good point. Um, all right, uh, do we have any further discussion for any of the, the other board members? Or Norm, I'll allow you also to weigh in if it's something that you would like to do.
Awesome.
All right, hearing none, we'll have a, uh, Ron, go ahead.
It's like Jeff raises his hand, I don't know if he wants.
I just gotta, yeah. I was just gonna echo what the chair just said, ju- I think that's the reason why, uh, to keep it nonpartisan, that the TA. Remain as the, uh, overseer administrator of any committee, steering committee, resume screen.
And and I would say to that, that I'm fine with the planning commission taking the leadership on the steering committee, so. I think that's the perfect group for it, and I'll be working with them throughout the process anyway, they'll, they will definitely have my input into the process, so. I'm comfortable with that, I just wanna make sure, the board, obviously, first will vote on the Leah issue, but then. Secondarily, I don't need, you need to have a vote, but just the general recognition admitted that the select board is agreeing that the. Uh, planning board can in effect appoint the members of the, of the group.
Appoint the members of the group, or I thought we just talked about having the TA?
Yeah, I said, I don't really need that, I really think that that belongs with the planning commission, uh, the planning commission to make that vote, so. Uh, I don't, I think it really is better for them to make the decision than me in this case, Jeff. Cause in the end of the day, it's them who has to make the recommendation and the select board too to, to kind of, you know, work with the board, all. At the end of the day, all the groups have to work together to support this, otherwise it, the, the master plan won't go anywhere. Uh, but I really think that the planning commission is the lead planners in the town, this is a, a place I think it really belongs. And not so much with me, uh, David is gonna be the lead, uh, technical advisor on this, on this plan, so. Uh, you'll have the steering committee made of seven and David is serving as a technical advisor, but I think that, that's the rightful place for this.
Right. So who? Who is then, well, first, uh, we have a motion in a second, I, uh, my question is, um, and this maybe goes to Norm. Because, you know, MGL specifically requires, you know, goals and and policies that. Are going to be representative of town goals, that are gonna be incorporated into this master plan. Who is setting those goals? Because the planning board under MGL makes the master plan and then would vote to adopt it. Um, I guess, wha- what is your vision for? W- the basis, the starting point, which are the community goals, because you're going to have differences of opinion as to what those goals should be. Um, I know, uh, we also have staff that's gonna be helping, and Dave in particular is, you know, probably pretty familiar with best practice. On these things, are you envisioning hearings for the public to participate? I mean, what really is, is the way that you wanted to approach the goal setting?
Well, a- a- at least for some part, uh, of of the goal setting, we're, we're going to need data. Uh, some of this would have to come from surveys, uh, and 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 tha- and that sort of thing, uh, you know, we're, we're certainly not gonna. Uh. Y- y- you know, ha- ha- have a goal of, uh, you know, en- encouraging heavy industry i- i- into the town of Rutland, when we know it can't happen. And probably the people in the town don't want it, so, uh. The goals, I think, have to have to be data driven after, uh, some research, whether it be. Uh, another survey that is sent out, uh, we are certainly somewhere along the line, and I don't know. How this is going to work at this point, I'm probably gonna put it in the hands of CMRPC, uh, but there certainly will probably be, uh, time for focus groups. Uh, a- and, uh, you know, larger discussion, obviously, right now, it can't be in person. Uh, it can't be like the last time, I, I, you know, I rather vividly remember meeting at, uh, the Naqog School Gym. And we, we have forty, fifty, sixty people in sometimes for, uh, you know, little carol, uh, discussions. You know, about various things.
Yeah.
That's gotta be part of, uh, how, how we would even establish a goal.
And and, well, MGL calls for a public process, and I, my whole goal is making sure, because all of us, both. We're in a unique position because planning board in Rutland is elected, and we're elected, so we're all political, and there's high turnover rates and. You know, my goal is to make sure that this master plan can be something we look at after my tenure, and after all of our tenures on these boards come to an end. Um, that we can still continue to use, so I look forward to that process, but, um, maybe that's something too that, that we. Can come together and help push into the community if we have a series of hearings or surveys or whatever, just to make that. That, um, that net that we capture, public information as much as we can, I know Leah, you just went through that same process with the survey for, you know, uptown. Um, stuff like that, so just kind of keep a surprise, uh, of that, uh, we can help any way we can. In disseminating that information or getting people to come out, uh, but I just wanna make sure that the, the goal setting is really. Um, left to the greater public, um, which is kind of what the statute indicates, so, all right. That's all I got, but we have a, a motion and a second, uh, there's no further discussion, uh, I have a roll call, vote. Uh, Stillings, uh, go ahead, Tamika.
I apologize, I missed who seconded the motion.
Uh, Lyndon did.
Thank you.
Lyndon, that's correct, right, I know that your volume went in now, but. Okay, looks like that was a yes. I'm sorry, Ron.
Lyndon, you can't hear Lyndon, so we need to fix that going forward.
Lyndon, can you unmute your mic and say something?
Trying to fix my earpiece.
I think there's just a, there was just a delay when you unmute, so when you start talking.
That's just.
All right, so, okay, we'll have a roll call, vote, uh, Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye, thanks all.
And Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous, congratulations for taking on more work, Leah, uh, you know, certainly, uh, appreciated.
And I need to honestly reach out to me for, individually for things, or we can, you know, try to make it a, a. At least monthly occurrence or something, w- once we get going, that I provide an update to the board or something, we can work it out.
Yeah, I think we should just, um, to play it safe, um, let's have these as board discussions, uh, because if people start emailing you, um. About different, we don't wanna be deliberating, uh, inadvertently, so.
Yep.
Uh, I look forward to that public process, Norm, uh, to engage the public about those goals, and I think your board is extremely capable and, um. Full of some really bright people, so I look forward to that process moving forward.
I look forward to working with you too, Norm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, uh, we have under old business, uh, the, you know, item sixty-two Bay Path Cares Funding. Rounds two and three funding, uh, just as a preface before I hand it over to Ron, we, uh, had this conversation. At our last meeting, uh, where Bay Path came in and requested a small amount of money for Cares Funding. Uh, for some PPE and the things of that nature related to their hybrid model, uh, I think, Ron, you have an update?
Yeah, I had a c- conversation with Seth about this, we already applied for round two of Cares Funding, so that money's already been allocated. Uh, Seth believes that the, uh, round three is gonna happen within the next couple of weeks. And I would support, uh, putting in, I, I didn't frankly bring the amount with us, but what they told us last year, I think it was thirteen thousand something. Um, that we would apply for that in the round three phase. It is sort of interesting because I was told that round three, well, it may have to be suspended before December thirty first. So I'm not sure how, it seems like if round three comes forward, we're gonna have to immediately apply for money we need. I don't think the federal government has extended beside, beyond December third, there's still. Close to three hundred grand of money that's allocated towards our town, so it's easy in terms of allocating the thirteen grand. Uh, but they haven't given us an exact date for round three yet, but the board of selectmen is in favor of supporting. Bay Path in this way, I think it makes sense, we move forward with it, I would wanna vote to, to support the Bay Path recommendation for funding the thirteen. Don't have to use the exact amount, whatever was in that letter, maybe, uh, Tamika has it, but to support, uh. That amount to give the Bay Path, and I did talk to Dean today, Akabelas, who's the finance manager for Bay Path. So far, only four of the ten towns have agreed to it, and I'll only say it from my position, and my years of working with Bay Path, the last five years, they've been, or not. Yeah, Bay Path, they've been a great organization and have been very responsible fiscally with their money, more so than frankly I've seen school boards. So, you know, I trust it, uh, whatever they're doing, uh, is gonna be positive and helping, and they're very appreciative. Letting know that the, the board of selectmen was considering this, and hopefully other towns will join in and help them as well.
It's Leah, I'd like to make a motion that based on e- feedback from Seth, well, s- sorry, I guess we should offer if there's discussion, sorry, Mitch.
No, I mean, if you wanna make a motion, it's, it's within your right to make a motion, if you wanna have discussion, you can do it after a second.
Okay, um, I mean, I would like to make a motion that based on our previous conversation and having the final. Uh, or feedback from Seth, our, uh, FEMA manager and cares fund manager, as well as with, uh, Mr. San Angelo. That the board go ahead and, uh, offer the, I, I pulled up the file from the couple of weeks ago, I think it was the thirteen thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. Um, in cares funding allocation from, uh, round three funding to Bay Path for their, um, PPE and everything.
I'll second that.
Well, all right, I think Lyndon beat you to it, Skip, but just for the note, also wanted a second. Uh, uh, just for discussion, uh, we, we had conceptually, I think, uh, all agreed, uh, at the last meeting that this is something we would support. I also think this is a good time to quickly note in something again, that we might do something a little bit more formal on. When the world calms down a little bit after the holidays, but, uh, we've had a longstanding good relationship with Bay Path, uh, they really helped the town. They did some work in the select board office in the library, um, in fact, this past week, they delivered a desk extension to. The, uh, the select board and, and planning board desks that, that those boards use. Uh, for public meetings, so that we're not all crammed in there, um, and so that Ron has, has adequate space and he doesn't have to sit at a separate table. Um, so, you know, we have a, a good relationship and they really helped the town on several occasions, so. Any further discussion, uh, regarding the, uh, the motion? Nope, all right, we'll have a roll call, vote, uh, Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous, thank you, Ron.
And, Mr. Chair, one other point, cause we kinda skipped through it, as we discussed, we had an E in the previous thing, we have the. Budget roundtable discussion with our school group, and, you know, they're looking for a representative from this board. And I, I think we do have one more meeting before that date, but I don't know if you guys wanted to pick a representative from this board to attend that roundtable tonight or.
We can get that, if, if the board doesn't have any objections, we can get that hammered out tonight, um, you know, I had served last year. Um, you know, I work with this kind of stuff, uh, so I, I'm more than happy if nobody else is clamoring to do it. Um, to do it on behalf of our board.
I was actually gonna, I was actually gonna offer Mitch to see if you were interested, I know it's another evening meeting, but. Um, just you have the continuity from last year, and I know that this is kind of in your wheelhouse a little bit, so, um. Yeah, I. I don't know if there's additional discussion, I'm happy to make that motion.
I'm second it.
All right, do you have any discussion, Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, we just add to you that I think, in this case, this is, in my opinion, a very important discussion in terms of. The budget for the school system, I, I think it, it lends a lot of credibility to have the chairman in this case to show you this issue. So I, I think the chairman is the per- is the right candidate for this.
I just have one question, I know in the past, the, um, the rest of the board was invited, but kind of the, whoa, whomever the board nominated was kind of the spokesperson. And not really consulted with the, the rest of the group, or would the rest of the board or any board members be able to attend the? Google meet just as, uh, like spectators kind of and not.
I think the, the, the meeting is open to the public.
Okay.
Um, and I'd wanna just get clarification too, and correct if I'm wrong, Ron, but i- it's not, if the board were to attend. It wouldn't necessarily constitute an OML or forum unless there was deliberation about any items. Um, so again, I, I think that anybody who wants to participate can participate, I know last year, they wanted it limited to. Um, one member from the select board, the town administrators were obviously all there, and then one member from FinCom. And the reason why we had sent two last year was because FinCom could not attend, so. Was that some?
No, just responding to your comment in the letter that we all received, it says, you know, who, who do you want sitting at the table? And that's one of the three representatives for the town, sitting at the table, but it does say that this is gonna be a public meeting. Live broadcast, so I think anyone could chirp in, you stay into the, whatever this is, a Zoom meeting, whatever this turns out to be. I don't think that's a problem, it's just you wouldn't have, quote, speaking rights as a representative of the town, uh, it is a, it's six, January sixth. Uh, beginning at six thirty PM, uh, via Google Meet, I guess is what they're gonna use, but. But I think it's fine that anyone that wants to attend and listen can do so.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further conversation? Uh, hearing none, we'll have a roll call, vote, again, this is on item, uh, town administrator update, item E, um, on the agenda. All right, uh, Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Resity, aye, motion carries unanimous, uh, thank you folks, and hopefully we can bring some good news back, uh, regarding our budget. Okay, um, under new business, uh, we have, uh, three items, the first is. Um, part of our annual license renewals for twenty twenty-one, we have a couple that have been completed, uh, Ron, do you wanna walk us through those?
Uh, these are, again, these are the ones you, you, in your packet, you have the actual licenses in it for the various ones we're gonna approve tonight. Again, these have been recommended by all the different staff members of the town, so they are the completed. As you know, one of the things that we look at too is that they pay their taxes, and their taxes are, uh, met, so that's all set. And the license names are as, as on the, uh, warrant, uh, Rutland Marketplace. Uh, for wine and malt, Common and Vicular, Dunkin' Donuts, Honey Farms, Dew. Oh, Honey Farm slash Dew and Still Four Corners, Frederick Golf, uh, Heavy Evies and Rutland Marketplace. So they're, they're all listed on the agenda, but those are the ones we're approving tonight, there's a whole slew of them that are not ready to come to the board yet, and they will come. Once all the different steps have been taken to make sure that you can approve them.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to approve, uh, the licenses, I guess we'll take them separate, um. If you wanted to do a slate, we could do the common vices of slate and the wine and malt separately. Um, if that's appropriate, Ron, if you feel like that gets the job done.
Any way you wanna do them, it's up to you how you pass them.
Okay, uh, at this point, we'll entertain motions to approve completed licenses, uh, for both wine and malt and our common vic licenses.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion. Sorry, Lee.
That's fine, I'll second.
All right, the motion is to approve uh both wine and malt and common vic as listed on the agenda and in our packets with all the completed information um as a slate. Is there any conversation for any members of the board? All right, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
And Recidi, aye, motion carries unanimous. Next, we have contracted.
Sorry, Mitch.
Uh go ahead, Leah.
I think that this is just an update for all of us since we're all remote, I think we all need to individually sign these licenses. I think Aaron had sent an email saying that it still requires all five of our in um signatures, it's not something Ron can sign on our behalf.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for for noting that, so I guess, folks, if you can um just check in with Ron and then maybe stop by the the annex to get those signed, uh we can do that.
Yeah, that's a picture of capital improvement which way there, so that's good.
And then some nice light reading for the weekend, uh okay.
Yeah.
All right, um item number sixty-six, contracted green at Weston and Sampson Water Main Improvements uh to Miles Road. I think um in this item, we also should talk about uh the Weston and Sampson contract uh for the water department as a whole. Um if uh Ron, I think that would be the appropriate place.
Everybody froze, everybody froze.
No, I think uh maybe it's just on your end, Ron, you're all right?
The whole meeting came to a freezing. Yeah, I know, it's okay now, but yeah, everybody froze, but it it just reset itself, so okay, we're okay.
Okay, so all right, so we're gonna talk, uh we have the water, uh Weston and Sampson Water Main Improvements Contract Agreement. Um we have in front of us the motion for the board of selectmen to allow. The TA to sign the contract between Weston and Sampson and the town of Rutland regarding engineering services for the Miles Road Water Main Improvement. Uh that mean that broke that a couple of weeks ago in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Is there any discussion on the item before we go forward? All right, I'll entertain that motion if the board uh so wishes to make that motion.
I'll make the motion for uh the board of selectmen to allow the town administrator to sign the contract between Weston and Sampson and the town of Rutland. Regarding engineering services, Miles Road Water Main Improvement in the amount, in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars on their behalf, on our behalf.
Hey, do I have a second?
Stillings can second.
All right, Stillings, second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just so that you know, DPW superintendent is on, if there's any questions of him, he is at the meeting.
So, um all right, we'll have a roll call vote, Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
And Recidi, aye, motion carries unanimous. Uh I think we also should talk about under this item, um something that came to our attention uh prior, right prior to the meeting. Um is a similar contract uh for Weston and Sampson to take over some water duties. Uh Ron, did you wanna brief the board on what was going on there?
I I sure do, we uh, as you know, we have our own water treatment company, and really, there's two full, two full-time employees and one part-time employee who uh works at facility. Uh one employee has gave notice that he was leaving, uh and since then, our DPW director's been working hard to get estimates for a company to come in. And temporarily provide those services that the employee would have provided had he stayed on board. We've already posted the new position, so it's out there, and that position requires uh that the employee be certified to operate a facility. Uh so the DPW director would like to hire Weston and Samp- Sampson uh with money that's already in the budget to temporarily uh support the operations. Until such time as the new employee can come on and run. And you're correct, Mr. Chairman, that no, the employee gave notice not long ago, and we've been trying to get to a point where we can have a contract with somebody provide this. But it's an emergency because without this person, you can't operate the water treatment plant to provide water to the citizens. So it's justified under the open meeting law when you have a emergency type situation for the board of selectmen to add it to the agenda. Again, this is already, there's money in the budget for Joe to do this, uh so we're comfortable in it. And with that, I'm gonna ask Joe just to make a couple of comments on it uh before you guys move forward, if you would, Mr. Chairman.
Uh go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Recidi, um I just wanna reinforce some of the points that um the town administrator has raised. Uh namely, uh the water treatment plant runs seven days a week, doesn't run twenty-four hours a day, but it does run seven days a week. Uh our part-time or operator is out on medical leave and could be out for some time, so we are currently down to one operator. Uh we made inquiries with two or three firms to try and come up with an operator who was certified to run our facility, and they're currently not available. Weston Sampson was the only one who was able to prov- provide an operator. Um I can take any questions as needed.
And this, this would not need to be bid out because it falls under the exemption for procurement, correct?
Professional services, yes.
Okay, um first off, uh thank you, I know your crews over the last few weeks have been through a lot, um so thank you. Um and I know the the individual that left, uh you know, thank him for his service too, I think he was here for a long time. Uh but if this, if this is something that um Joe, that that we need, I mean, it's obviously an emergency situation, if we can't find somebody. What what do you think the duration of this agreement is going to be based on? I mean, do you think the the applicant market for the position's going to be robust, that we can get somebody in in the next couple of months that would fill that role?
Um. Mr. Chairman, I do not believe that the market is robust. I think um we're gonna be facing a definite challenge trying to fill that role. I contacted three firms to come up with folks to get quotes to operate that facility. Um White Water that in Auburn, um that's a, they have a big staff, maybe a hundred and sixty people. Um I talked to uh Small Water, um I also talked to um Weston and Sampson, and Weston and Sampson, with even given the size of that firm, they have one person available, and they're coming here from somewhere. So I think we are gonna see some challenges. Um the sticking point, if you will, is the grade-two operator license, um I try, I talked to the Commonwealth Massachusetts DEP. To see if I could get a um fast-track getting someone that certification. Um they fast-track lower ones, but not that.
Um just the duration usually for getting that licensure in a normal.
Year, year and a half.
Year, year and a half.
And there's exams involved.
Yeah, well, the money's already budgeted through the position, um so it doesn't cause financial burden, I just, I know that it's tough to operate an apartment. When you don't have the surety of of continuities, so certainly appreciate your efforts there. Is there any other board, Leah, I think you had your hand up?
I think you asked most of the questions, I was wondering just kind of how the the horizon was looking as far as getting a permanent, that position filled permanently. And um my other, only other comment, and Joe, this is, I don't need discussion or anything, but I don't know if you have any people internally who might be interested in working towards the exams. To get to the steps to to move into that role, um if we're looking at having a difficult time, is it worth investing in um current employees?
Um we have posted it internally and externally, and I I haven't seen a lot of interest, but it it's a good question.
The answer is if we, if if there's somebody internally that is interested, we'll get very serious consideration to that candidate.
Well, I think the Leah's question too, I think, incorrect if I'm wrongly, but it spoke to, I know before we had talked about getting additional, for example, I think maybe it was even you, Joe, that expressed interest in. Being a licensed as a purchasing agent or um that additional certification, just so as a fallback for the community if there's ever a gap. Um I think Leah's question was more also towards are there any existing employees that also maybe wanna diversify their portfolio and get that licensure, who would support that? Leah, was that kind of where you were going with the question?
Yeah, it was kind of both-fold, like if someone really was interested in that position but don't have the certification. And knowing that there's not a lot of, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of folks who are lur- looking that have the certifications. Um that the town would be willing to support that timeline, but also I I it was twofold in that kind of deepening our well as far as employees and.
As your opponent expected, the way.
Right, right?
Um, yes, of course, we always try and grow our own staff, we 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 make every effort to do that. I I'm just being as frank as I can, that there really isn't any interest. Um.
Okay, so Ron, uh Joe, are you looking for a, I guess, a motion for you to sign this agreement?
So, Mr. Chairman, I I emailed you and maybe should have grabbed that same email, you personally needed a motion to add it to the agenda. And then a secondary motion to approve the agreement that was sent to you this afternoon.
Okay, and we are, we are sure that because of the nature of the situation, that we can in fact add this to an existing agenda as an emergency uh item.
And the answer to that question is yes, I'm comfortable with that because we didn't know about it until this afternoon. So the concept is, the inspector general's office doesn't like you adding the agenda, but if there's no choice, it's emergency nature like this, they want you to add it, you know, they they're okay with adding it to the agenda. This quite frankly is not the kind of controversial issue where.
Right.
Well, bunches of citizens would show up for this, so I think it's perfectly okay to do this, and there's no question that we have to keep water running and somebody running that facility, so.
All right, so I I pulled up your, I guess the the first motion would be to add to the agenda, entertain a motion to to add to the agenda a contract between. The town of Rutland and Weston and Sampson to provide water treatment services to the town of Rutland, uh if the board is so moved.
So moved, Stillings?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Uh Clark?
Aye.
Recidi, aye, motion carries unanimous. The second motion needed would be to ratify the contract between the town of Rutland and Weston and Sampson as outlined in the contract and allow the town administrator to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Um I just wanna make sure uh as a question that we're not going to be exceeding the funding that we have already budgeted for the position.
I think to through you to our DPW director, I imagine you're funding this out of, you know, some kind of services account, uh vendor services account. Could you uh explain that, how much money is in that account generally, and if you're comfortable that you'll have funding in that account to get us through the year?
We have two sources we're gonna rely on, um. Mr. San Angelo, first off is um the existing salary line item for the person who's stepped down. And the second one would be um uh planned operations and and our capital management if we get to that point, I'm hoping to have someone hired before that.
Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye, thanks Joe for all your work.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
And Clark?
Aye.
Uh Recidi, aye, motion carries unanimous, uh Joe, get some sleep, I know it's been a rough few weeks, so.
Mitch, I could just say one thing, um and I wanted to thank for your kind words about the uh the crews working through the uh the the water main breaks. Um in many ways, anytime we have water main breaks, it it's an all hands on deck type thing, and everybody jumped in and did a great job, so. Just wanted to throw that out there, thank you.
Joe, I wanna thank you too for all the work you guys did on Friday, we really appreciate it.
Uh I've seen some of the stuff you've worked through in uh in Worcester, Joe, so I bet you thought you left that behind you when you you came here, but I know it's been a rough few weeks for you guys, so thank you, your your department.
Yeah, Joe, send all of our appreciation to the whole department, cause between the storms and the water mains and everything, you guys have really been.
Thank you.
But it's not boring.
No, there you go, yeah, there's always a silver lining. All right, so that takes care of that item, um so we're all set there. And the next, coming down here, oh, we have another item for Joe. Um purchase agreement for uh the DPW twenty fifteen International Seventy Four Hundred. Um if you recall, I believe, Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, um this is the item that passed um at special town meeting for the the plow assault sander. Um to replace equipment that was really kind of on its last leg. That's correct.
Yes, uh they did pass that.
Okay, so this is just that item, um so I guess the the motion, I'll entertain a motion for the board to allow the town administrator to sign the purchase agreement with Clark's Truck Center. Uh in Jericho, Vermont, regarding the purchase of the twenty fifteen International Seventy Four Hundred for the town of Rutland DPW in the amount of forty-nine thousand twenty-five dollars uh on behalf of the board.
So moved, Stillings?
Whitman, seconds.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh so go ahead, Skip.
To the chair, what's happening with the old vehicle you're replacing?
To answer, um do you, can I answer uh Mr. Clark directly, Mr. Recidi?
Yes, of course.
Um Skip, it's gonna be surplus, I I don't think this, we could try and sell it on the open market, but I I don't think it's worth enough. It's a nineteen ninety-eight international, we'll we'll sell it to the highest bidder.
Who do we use, Joe, for um for surplus sales, do we have like a vendor that we go through for that?
Um no, we would just do it as similar to purchasing under Massachusetts thirty-B, um but currently, anything we've surplus to date hasn't been worth enough to warrant having to even advertise.
Okay.
All right, I'm just curious.
The last, the last, no, it's a good question, the last couple, we um actually went for scrap.
Yeah, some of that equipment's in rough shape, so. All right.
Well, twenty-two years old, it's not safe either, it's not safe, right? No.
No, and the frame is separating on that one, if I thought the frame was still solid.
Oh, no, Joe, Joe, you're talking it down, my husband wants to buy it, let's just, let's pretend like it's good, right?
Uh I don't have that in me, I just.
Or you can get a sticker.
Yeah, no, I think uh CIPC took a tour uh last year, that facility, and um some of that equipment really needs replacing, so.
But I I I appreciate Mr. Clark's question, we have, we have no intention on continuing to use that, it'll be surplus.
Okay, any further questions or conversation with the board? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on the motion, Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And Recidi, aye, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Joe. Uh last item on the agenda, uh go ahead, Ron.
This, one of the things we had talked about prior to the meeting, a little bit in terms of pro- process. Kim, could you do something with him in terms of process?
I thought that was mine, I was looking around.
Yeah, I got a little dog that barks louder than he should. Um one of the questions that I had, you'll notice that this contract for the truck is a contract that's based upon special town meeting voting the money already. And the capital improvement committee doing it, you know, my general concept is that anything that's considered a contract, not a purchase order that I bring to the select board for their approval. I just don't know if you wanna approve contracts that are already budgeted for, that you already know are coming, uh or do you want me to sign them? I just wanted a little bit of clarity on what you guys think in terms of voting to approve contracts or not. Um you know, and when I was in the previous town, one select board said if it was already budgeted for, uh it was already agreed upon to select them to do things like buy a truck, they didn't want it to come before them. And then the select board cha- or the town council changed, the new council said we want every contract to come before the board. So I just wanted to, if you guys want, I will bring every contract before the board, and when I mean by a contract, that's a a document that's signed by the two parties, you know, the 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 company we're contracting to company. Not a purchase order, not something like that, but a a more formal kind of contract, so I just kind of wanted to get a feel, if you guys want me to bring them all to you. If it's already something budgeted that, uh it's fine, I just kind of wanna get some perspective from you as to how you'd like me to handle that situation.
Um I'll let the board weigh in, I think my my only, my personal indication is that uh this particular item, um Joe had met with CIPC early on, followed the process. Um this was a year and a half ago now, probably, uh laid forward a capital plan, uh this item was fully vetted by CIPC. It then went to town meeting for our own internal procedure, was voted on positively. Um and it's, the contract is exactly in line with the numbers that was provided by Joe and what was voted on at town meeting. Something like this, personally, I I like to have the knowledge and awareness of, but I'm not sure it raises to the level of needing um to hold things up to have the board reapprove something that. Had already gone through internal procedures, but I'll let the rest of the board weigh in on what they feel about that.
I agree with you.
That was kind of my feeling also, the only, I guess, caveat is if. We've had in the past things that we thought may have gone through CIPC and didn't actually get either all the way through the CIP process, CIPC process, or we're kind of going before CIPC. In a similar timeline as the the select board or something, so just, um if you have a handle on it's been through the whole process and everything, I'm fine, you know. Not having it come before us, but I know that there have been some great. Not having it come before us, but I know that there have been some gray areas, um, in the past.
And obviously, Ron, I think too, if the number exceeded what was budgeted for, or if there was an anomaly that we would need to be aware of. I think that that's something we also need to see, but, um, I think just bringing it to the board, just as an F Y I, this is what we're purchasing. Based on the town vote and C I P C vetting. Uh, there have been capital purchases that would have been made, vehicles. That had not gone through C I P C, um, and evaded the board. So I mean, there's been, you know, people took notice and it, it wasn't a good situation. So I think just having the, the information and the knowledge is good, is good on our end. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does. I mean, you know, for instance, the water contract, it was an emergency order. You guys were unaware of that even happening. I think that kind of contract should rightfully come before you because you weren't aware of it. Uh, you know, so things that you guys have never heard about or seen before, clearly those kind of contracts should come before you. The contracts where, like you say, you've had a lot of vetting already going on. I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll announce it. To the board as part of my administrator's report and after if there's something where you go, no, we want that to come before the council, we can bring it a later date if that's, if that's the case. I just wanted to get, you know, I don't want to get caught in a gray area. I hate when all of a sudden I approve something and I go, and one or two members of the selectmen go, no, I think we should approve that. That's. That's my only concern here. I, there, there are gray areas and I just don't want to get into that. Oh, well, you should have brought this to the board. That's why I kind of want to get some feel from you guys as to what you are comfortable with.
Understood. Does anyone else, uh, have any feedback from the board?
Sounds reasonable. As long as we have some visibility through your, your verbal report to us at the, at the meetings or. Or have you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Uh, the last item on the agenda. Uh, is an item that Jeff had requested you place here, uh, for island dedication. Um, Jeff, I'll, I'll cede to you. You want to give a little explanation about this?
Uh, thank you. I'll be brief. Uh, thank the chair for placing this on the agenda. So fellow members of the board, I have a naming, naming request. Uh, that I'd like to propose to you and that relates to the intersection of Main Street and Pleasantale. I would like to propose that that island or that area right there be, uh, uh, so dedicated as Anderson Square. Uh, in dedication for our chief, Ralph H. Anderson Junior, that section of land. Transcending all the way from, uh, Main Street towards almost towards the Sportsman's Club, has been in his family for multiple, multiple generations. Certainly, uh. Beyond his eighty-two years, uh, on this earth. So this is a gentleman, uh, who's, who's. That whole area has been in his family, but more specifically, the man himself is eighty-two years old, Ralph Anderson. And half of his life, half of his life, forty years, has been dedicated specifically and solely to the town of Rutland. Uh, serving as our first full-time police chief, which paved the way. For the modern day, uh, very professional force that we have today, uh, the Chief Monaco's tutelage. And, uh, what I was going to propose is that that section right there rightfully be dedicated. And so named as Anderson Square, uh, in the same manner that we recognize the Allenobi Chiefs. On Upper Palm Augustus Road for, uh, Attilio and, uh, Hugo, the, uh, police and fire chief respectfully. In there, so should we dedicate that section right there as Anderson Square. Uh, in dedication for, uh, the first full-time police chief. And, uh, public servant of forty years to our community, so I would, uh. If there's, if there's no discussion, I would make that in the form of a motion, Inspector.
I second that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do we have any discussion from the board? Alright, hearing none, uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Nichols.
Nichols Aye.
Whitman.
Whitman Aye.
Stillings.
Stillings Aye, thank you.
Clark.
Aye.
And Recity I motion carries unanimous. Alright, uh, that is it for the items on the agenda. Is there anything else for the Good and the Welfare? Hearing none, I will, uh, Joe, are you?
Yeah, just one quick thing. I just want to tell everybody, have a happy holiday.
It's not on the agenda, Joe.
Motion adjourned.
Alright, I have a motion to adjourn to a second. Alright.
Second for discussion, sir.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to thank and recognize the, uh, fire department, the police department and everybody, uh, who, uh, worked tirelessly. This weekend for the, uh, fire truck Santa program that, uh, the public may have heard the sirens going around town. That was all. Beware of our, uh, spearheaded by our fire chiefs that night in there, uh, for very successful, uh, delivering of, I believe it was over four hundred. Children, almost two hundred homes in, uh, in our community where Santa Claus arrived via fire engine. To, uh, make a magical moment for multiple, multiple, uh, children in there, so.
Obviously, it's, it's great for the kids and, uh, you know, it's good that Santa was able to take some time out. I know he's busy this time of year, so. Uh, certainly appreciate all the efforts there. I saw the trucks going around town, so that was certainly something special and, uh, I, I agree with that sentiment, Jeff.
Ron, if, if you could extend the board's, uh, appreciation to the chair.
Will do.
Alright, and a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote. Nichols.
Nichols Aye.
Whitman.
Whitman Aye.
Stillings.
Stillings Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Recity I motion carries unanimous. Thank you all and have a Merry Christmas.